Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Motion to approve the April ninth, two thousand and fourteen town council special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Epstein.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Motion to move for April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen town council meeting.
So moved with one correction on page five, under nine, item A, budget deliberations. It should be bonding on NBIS, not NVA.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Epstein.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Epstein.
Water pollution control authority agenda, item three, correspondence, citizen's statements. Item four, unfinished business. Item five, new business. Item A, possible development and sanitary sewer connection properties, two twenty-four Foxen Road and two forty-four Foxen Road, North Branford.
Good evening. I prepared a memorandum, just to give you an overview of the request of the owner of the property at two twenty-four and two forty-four Foxen Road. The owner of that property is looking to potentially develop it with a retail, commercial-type development, and it's basically at the northwest corner of Totucket Road and Foxen Road. There's a colored map in the back, and I tried to put a lot of information on there, maybe too much information, but I'm trying to show you sort of the overview of what's proposed, the location, and some of the impacts that I looked at when evaluating this. And again, just to go over briefly the map I had, I've put on the zones, the I-two zone, which is sort of that pinkish-orange color in there, which borders the East Haven Town Line, and it's north of Foxen Road. The B-one, commercial zone, which is the orange-colored areas, which are along Foxen Road, primarily the southern portion of Foxen Road, but also the northerly portion vicinity of Totucket Road. Those are, again, the existing industrial and commercially zoned properties. The majority of the I-two properties and some of the B-one property that abuts East Haven has been authorized basically for a direct discharge into the East Haven system. Each of those properties, with the town of Branford WPCA, worked out arrangements with that, at that time with the town of East Haven, and ultimately now it's the Greater New Haven WPCA, to directly discharge into that system. So they are currently served by sewers. That's that green line, and to the left, to the East Haven Town Line. All those properties are currently served by sanitary sewers. What we've always, what's been talked about in the past is how to potentially service some of the commercial zones in the Foxen Road area, along the Farm River, in this vicinity. I do want to point out, there's some potential concerns for funding. Sometimes, if we're looking for state or federal funding, a lot of these properties or portions of the properties are within the limits of a hundred-year floodplain. Sometimes, those raise red flags when you're looking for grants or monies from the state or the feds. We haven't got to that point with it, but I've seen it happen in the past. You know, those grants, a lot of times, try not to encourage development in flood zones, and that may or may not be a potential issue. But getting back to this particular property, this is pretty much on the upper center right, at the corner of Totucket Road and Foxen Road, the northwest corner. The owner is potentially looking at, I think, a substantial retail, commercial-type development, and he's looking to be able to serve that property by sanitary sewers. I looked at it, and the easiest way for that property, and that property pretty much alone, to be serviced, is putting in some type of pump or grinder pump and directly discharging into the existing sanitary sewers in Woodchase Lane. There's a lot of details that have to be worked out, in terms of what their flow is, the impacts, downstream capacity, and there's a potential that this falls onto the state DEP community sewer system arrangement that may require, you know, another approval by the state as well. But at this time, it's a preliminary concept, what the owner is looking to potentially do. If we run it by me, I want to run it by the WPCA for, basically to get the concurrence or any considerations, bring them out now, before he gets too far and, you know, gets really into the potential development and pursuing all the details of it. To me, it looks like if he's looking to do something now, it looks pretty much readily doable. Again, there's a few hoops to jump through, but he can serve that property with sanitary sewers relatively easily. If, trying to tie it into the potential of doing something all along the Route eighty corridor, I don't know when that will be, and that could just, that may or may never happen. I don't know at this point. I mean, I think that's always been a desire to try to get him over there, but there's no timeframe for that, and there's a lot more logistical issues to do that. So, yeah, at this point, I'm trying to present before the WPCA. I pretty much put my initial thoughts in terms of basically saying, there's a lot of detail to be worked out, and it's got to be looked at, based upon some of the detail that the applicant would have to come forward with, in terms of the capacity and exactly where it would be located on that property. And there's some proposed lot line revisions that have to potentially occur. There may be some rezoning that planning and zoning has to look at as well. But again, it's a preliminary concept, just running it by the WPCA. If there's concurrence or if there's an issue, I'd rather tell the applicant at this point.
Is it the property that's inside that dark black lot, like the corner of Route eighty, that-
That's correct.
The house on the corner and back, that piece right there?
Yes.
Is that the only piece we're looking at?
That's pretty much it, at this point, is what I've been told. And that's a rough-
Right.
-approximate rectangle in there. That may move a little bit one way or the other, but generally, that portion of that property is what the applicant is looking to service. It's not in the flood, he's trying to stay out of any floodplain, anything he does, so with that as well. And that's really the high-dry portion of the property. I mean, the rest of it, the trailer park and some of the development all there, that's definitely all within regulated floodplain. And he's talking about potentially a lot line revision, and again, looking at zoning revisions to allow that, you know, potential use on that property, whatever exactly that turns out to be. And again-
Who would own, who would own the pump station?
They would own it, it'd be serving their property. The one thing that I put in here, the way I think it would happen is potentially that the force main in the street down Woodchase Lane, pretty much, they'd have to look at if there's the potential of other properties tying into that. But it'd basically be a grinder pump-type situation. You could have multiple, probably could have multiple facilities tie into there. And we, either we could own that line, the force main, the property owner could own it. And if we owned it, we could also, if he's the only one connected in there, I would think we could put the burden on him if there's ever a problem with it. He's responsible for the maintenance of that line. My biggest concern always is, I mean, you run a sewer line down the street, and someone digs it down the road, I'm also responsible for making sure, call before you dig. Everything's marked out. We want to make sure we know what's there, we market properly, and we protect it. That's the biggest thing that really can happen, something like that, for the most part.
Everything, out of all of these lots, is going to go gravity to that pump, and then there's going to be a force main to this?
Yeah, he's looking, on that lot that he's looking to serve, just gravity from the billing, billing or buildings on that property have a pump station, and it's probably just a large grinder pump, is what I think it's going to be, just to handle that, you know, that one lot.
What's the lifespan of the grinder pump?
Fifteen to twenty years. The pump itself, it's a maintenance item, and periodically you have to change them out. We have residential ones in town, and we always recommend everybody, we recommend that you have a service agreement, just like someone maintains your furnace, have someone do an annual maintenance inspection, and have somebody on call, because if you have a problem, invariably, it's Christmas Day, when everybody's over, you want to be able to dial a number and have someone repair it. But it's a mechanical piece of equipment. And again, the biggest point here is, if you're looking to service the property in the near future versus the long-term, you know, what may or may, may not ever happen in that, along the Route eighty corridor down there.
So, on the Route eighty corridor, are you, just because I don't know if I understand this right, you're thinking that it'd be something that other people could tie into?
Well, if we, if we look at doing something to service the commercial and industrial properties along Route eighty-
Because there's nothing there-
There's nothing there right now.
There's no sewer there now?
There's nothing, there's nothing in there. Some of the areas have pretty good soils. A lot of it's in the floodplain, you know, and that, again, raises red flags when you're looking to get grants or things like that.
I'm just trying to, like, think in my mind where there's sewers and where there isn't along Route eighty, you know?
Right. And there's nothing, basically, the yellow to the right, upper right, is Woodchase Lane, that's the closest sewer, and then there's this yellow area down along the Burris Brook, right through here, is where the sanitary sewer trunk line is that goes into East Haven.
And then there's one that goes down Twin Lakes, right towards Branford?
Yeah, that's a whole-
Yeah.
That's a long way away, but that's the only one in this vicinity.
Gotcha.
And a lot of that, again, you're dealing with state highway. Working on the state highway is a whole nother thing than a local road, in terms of doing work in there.
Right.
It's very costly.
I think we've definitely got to have a plan for, you know, appreciate your thinking ahead, because we do have to have a plan. I mean, you know, definitely we get sewers down Route eighty, so wherever we can get them, however we can get them.
So is the plan just for what's drawn out here? It looks like maybe two and a half acres, or is this pump, are we looking to get the, are those trailers, is that the trailer park that's next to it?
That's the trailer park next to it, and that's part of, they're same owner, different park.
Right, same owner. So from the trailer park, then, with an individual trailer, get a grinder pump and pump to this pump station?
No.
Or what?
We're only talking about servicing the, again, whatever, more like the parcel I have crosshatched in there.
So that's like, what are we talking, maybe a two-acre piece?
It's three or four, I'm going to guess. Oh, it's two, okay, yeah, okay. Depending on how he configures it in the end, right.
So, and this would be defined as like that, so that would be defined as that area?
That's correct. And again, what sort of brings us to the forefront is, again, the potential for commercial development. I think, my understanding, the trailer parks, you know, that, they're there now, they're within a floodplain, who knows, long-term, they may or may not be there. That's up to the property owner.
Oh, okay.
So if this was approved, then anything outside of that area would have to come back to this board?
Absolutely. It would only be for, to service that particular lot. That's the concept that I've been talking with the property owner at this point. Again, I would sort of look, and what I would done in detail is, what I want to look at is basically the sizing of that line, and looking at, well, if we want to add some additional properties to it, make sure there's some capacity in there, because that's the biggest long-term cost on the town point of view, getting that line in there. And then it's really individual grinder pumps that could connect to a force main.
So reading your notes on this, and once he, once he gets up in the road or the town right away, the town would own it? Or that's what you're thinking?
That's my initial thinking at this point. I'd have to sort of look at that, and the potential of other properties being served. If it's only going to be one property, we may not, we may or may not want to own it. I'd have to sort of just-
I think it makes sense to own the force main, because-
Well, I like to-
What you're saying, you know?
From a mark-out point of view, and again, I think, you know, I'd have to check with the town attorney, but I think we could, any agreement, if that's the only property that's tying into there, I think we can defer, you know, some of that maintenance of the line, if there's a blockage in line, that the only property tying into that line could be responsible if there's a blockage. I mean, that, that was my initial thought. I haven't, you know, pursued it legally or anything like that, but-
That sounds good.
So, coming out of a grinder pump, I mean, what are you thinking, a two-inch line, a three-inch line, a four-inch line?
You know, it could be a two-inch line, depending, depending on the projected flow. That's what you're sizing on, and-
But you're thinking that the force main should be sized large enough for expansion in the future?
Again, larger than for this, I mean, that's what I would look at. And I haven't, I haven't done that to say, well, maybe just, there's a couple properties that are out of the floodplain.
Yeah.
Those may, they're on the corner of, you know, two state, you know, two state highways. The potential for development is always better on, on the corner lots, if they were to tie in. The problem is, they have further to go, and they have some state highway crossings, and sometimes that makes it a little bit cost prohibitive. This property doesn't have to deal with a state highway, if it goes the route we taught.
That seems like a no-brainer. I mean, makes sense.
And again, I just wanted to run it by you, and just for, so I could talk to the property owner in terms of, he would like to pursue it and work out the details, and there's a lot of details, as I said, to be worked out, and the zoning issues still have to be dealt with initially before anything happens.
We'll probably see this again.
Yeah, I just want to keep you aware of it, and it seemed to me like a good potential to get some, you know, the commercial retail development.
Yeah, help them, yeah, help them work it out, the best we can.
Okay.
Item B, RFP, operation and maintenance services, sanitary sewer collection system.
Okay. This is just a follow-up. We discussed this back in December and January of the past year. For the, we need to go out for an operations maintenance service for our sanitary sewer collection system. We've been dealing with the same operator or contractor for the past nine years. We, nine, almost nine years ago, we went out to bid, we selected a firm, we've had very good service, we've been very happy with the service we've provided. Took time to go out again. And I talked several months ago about the methods, was it RFP, RFQ, and the like, and I've talked with John Jesman's office. Basically, it's put out, the request for proposals, they're providing prices upfront for all the services. And I include, just included the last page, just to sort of give you a highlight. There's basically a half dozen items in here. The main item is the first one, facility operations and maintenance program annual fee. And that's, that's what we've been dealing with over the past nine years. It's pretty much the same thing. I've added some other items to get prices on, and they're all subject to authorization separately, to do devi inspections of sanitary sewer lines. It's a progressive thing to do, it's a, something that would be good to do, to, because we know we have some leaks, we have some problems, catalogs them, and then we can pinpoint sometimes corrections. Our biggest, our biggest problem is, even though we're a newer system, we do have infiltration inflow, and that ultimately costs us when we discharge on the town. So, I've asked for a price, and it's strictly priced, and then we'll have to discuss it when we go to WPCA, budget, try to put that together. Depending on what the price is, it may or may not happen. I've also put in the Minister to fats and oil grease program, where under DEP, DEP has a requirement of fats, oils, and greases. We've been working with all the property owners to try to get people to comply, and most people are, have complied, but we don't have everybody compliant. And I used to have somebody, you know, I had an assistant in my office, and that was part of his duties, and when he got cut a few years ago, that sort of did, that was always, that's the kind of thing that I've been trying to squeeze in between everything else. Depending on the number we get, we can discuss it and decide what to do or not to do with it. And the rest of the other items are basically call before you dig, mark outs, inspect sanitary sewers. We already have that in our agreement with our current contractor, and that's, I do that for a regular basis, but if I'm on vacation, it provides a backup to me. Again, if I had the part-time help or the other help, that was his duty, but I've been, because it's slowed down a little bit, I've been able to sort of squeeze that in. So basically, the big item is item number one, we're going to get firm prices upfront, and then we'll review the prices and qualifications. Basically, I'd like to just go out with it, hopefully this, this month, down the street, come back, we're to the point, our current contract ends in September. So, we're in okay shape, I think, time-wise. So I-
How much was our current contract for the year?
About one hundred and fifty, I'm going to say, the annual. I mean, the interesting thing, and I'm going to go back nine years, with who we have, I think we had four bids, and they ranged at that time from maybe a hundred and twenty thousand up to a hundred and eighty thousand. I think the next lowest one was, was over the hundred and fifty that we're paying nine years later, so we've done pretty good. It's been pretty consistent, and operation-wise, we went from a one-man sewer department a number of years ago to contractual operations. It's worked very good. We had an earlier, different operator, wasn't quite the same, but the past nine years, I think we got, we got good bang for a buck, and I sleep a lot there at night, because it, and that's how I sort of judge it, because I know they're on top of things, I get regular reports, they're doing all the routine things. The other thing we may be looking for is to do a few capital improvements. We've got to do pump upgrades, so we don't want to be dealing with a broken pump, we want to schedule that repair in ahead of time, so if you don't want a sewer problem, it's not fun dealing with. But anyway, it's for information or any questions, but I just want to follow up from the last meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Item six, citizen's statements and petitions, regular town council meeting. Item seven, reports committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, economic development commission, proposed joint meeting June second.
You got the commission then last night, and as you know, there was a conflict with the original May twelfth, with permanent project building committee, so they came up with June second, and hope that the council members can attend that meeting that we have here with EDC and planning and zoning, and bring in Alan Platus and his assistant Andre with the, you know, analysis and what they have in terms of the data, sort of give you a better understanding of what the concepts or ideas are, and what they need to complete, and also talk about, you know, other items, in terms of funding, or in terms of direction, in terms of, you know, a second charrette and things of that nature. Sort of really an update, if you will, but a sort of a firsthand look at it, and talking with Alan directly, as a sort of workshop, if you will. So hopefully that, you know, meets with everyone's schedule, and we can pull that off. Any objections or conflicts? Anybody who's aware? Okay.
Item B, permanent project building committee.
Permanent project meets next Monday, the twelfth. But I just have a question. John, did you have a chance to look at the contract, remember, on the low bid?
Oh, yeah.
Lots of, lots of movement on that.
Oh, absolutely.
So?
Yeah, we were demanding either they do the job for the bid, or write us a check for the difference between their bid and the next lowest response.
So we're going to pursue that?
Not only that, we have a response already, so John, John gave Michelle the language, the language went out, Allied is coming, he said, yeah, Allied is going to take the bid. The first, the low bid. Little bit.
So you just save yourself for maybe about, what, seventy, eighty thousand dollars?
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight?
So I instructed Tom Hibbert to prepare the AIA contract, attorney Jesman to review, and I'll get it out to Allied, so.
Yeah, so it's, you know, putting the pedal to the metal, so to speak, because it's May, and we want to get this thing out. I mean, we want to get them moving on schedule on time, so.
Okay.
Item eight, town manager's report.
Yep, the first item A is about the zoning enforcement position, there's a vacancy there, that was Bud Dekia, and he has since handed his papers in and retired, so that is a vacancy I'd like to push forward with, and hope that there are no objections with getting somebody on board.
So, how many hours were the-
Well, it's, he was, he was in for eight hours a week, four hours twice a week, that's the way it was structured with Bud. It is, you know, a budgetary item that's in there, and I'll have to, you know, wait till we find the right candidate and then negotiate, maybe, depending on where the salary comes in, maybe we can stretch it to ten.
Do we know if Bud did any zoning enforcement?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it was-
Is there a record of what he did, what he accomplished, and?
You know, I don't know that there's, there's plenty of files, that's for sure, letters and files, in terms of issues that he's dealt with over, over the years. He's handed off a couple of files to me that are, you know, pressing right now, that we're working on. You know, I wasn't here long enough to give you a tally of, I guess he was here seven years, so I'm not sure, within an eight-hour, or if it's, if it was always eight hours, if it was reduced, or where he was, but, you know, he was, he was working on stuff, I know that, and given the limited data.
But it just seems like anything, any of the problems that we heard about are still existing, and even, even when the town council tried to send them to do things, it's like, nothing ever happened. I mean, they're existing to this day, you know, up and down Route eighty, so if nobody's going to do anything, I don't know why we have the job, but.
Now is an opportunity to change in-
Can we get a report on what he did do, and for the next meeting, and then we can make our decision as to whether we want to change the job? as to whether we want to change the job description or whatever we want to do.
And I know it's a tough job, you know. You've got small businesses trying to make ends meet, and then, you know, their sign's too big, or it's in the wrong place, or they're selling in the parking lot or something like that. But, you know, when other businesses that do the same thing and are paying taxes on a piece of property, and they make formal complaints on it, it's like, you've got to go address this, you know. If you want to be, if you want to be, if you want to play with the big boys, buy big boy property. And, you know, we've got guys that, you know, are selling in parking lots, making it difficult for the other vendors or other property owners in those parking areas to work, to, you know. The people that are going to buy stuff in the parking lot are parking in the other people's things. And, you know, this has been ongoing forever, and nothing ever gets resolved. And, you know, that's one of them. But I mean, I know they're all over town that never get resolved. So, you know.
I just, I think it's a faction or a function of eight hours. I mean, he's not always, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, sure, he's got to do those things. But he's also got to do the plan review and sign off. So, you know, I can't tell you, you know, how that breakdown was, but I think he was triaging. I think he was trying to prioritize and do what he could for eight hours a week that he had scheduled as four and four. So, you know, two days out of five that he was here. He was working to coordinate with, you know, building, fire marshal, whoever he had to, Carol, you know, planning and zoning, and doing what he could within the workload. So I think he was just keeping his head above water and trying to keep, you know, what he had to move through. And if it was beyond him, I'm sure, you know, there were things that he kicked to John and John's office to take a look at. You know, it's just a function, I think, for the town council to say, well, you know, is eight hours or 10 hours enough? Or is, you know, maybe, again, change of a person in terms of who yet to come in to replace him could have a different view of things. But regardless, it's going to be eight hours. What can you get done in eight hours a week? And he's got to decide.
He must have been hired for eight hours because that was what the job entailed. But we've never seen a report from him, and I've never seen any-
Yeah, I don't know, maybe Kurt can speak.
Can I just say something, just my observations?
I think the position was, actually it was a three-morning-a-week position for zoning enforcement. Times got tough, it got cut to two mornings a week. The one you're talking about, Al, I know there was follow-up. I know there were cease and desists, and I do know there was a, as a result, there was application of playing zoning to modify things, and there was an approval. But I saw what you're talking about, it's back again. And that's a continuing thing. Some of these things are seasonal things that come up every year. And you can have them cleared up, and they come back. And it's, it is a, it's a tough job a lot of times to get action by people. And I know Bud, you know, gave some to John, there's been injunctions, there's been, he's gone to court. In addition, I mean, to the enforcement, it's, you know, making sure everybody complies with regulations, reviewing applications, make sure that permitted uses, signs, everything complies with zoning regulations. In addition to administering, taking care of the zoning board of appeals agenda and items. To be honest with you, and you can get one bad project or one issue, it could just, that can suck up a whole lot of time. And to be honest with you, in order to do any meaningful, at least an attempt to do any enforcement of the regulations, you really need that other body in there. And again, we whittle it down to basically eight hours a week to get, to make it fit within the budget and to try to get some action. But Carol Zapp, she's got her hands, you know, there's enough other things that, again, one of these items can pull you off any productive things you're doing, playing zoning that she needs to deal with or wetlands. It just pulls away from all that, and, you know. And again, everything doesn't get cleared up right away, and I've seen that happen a lot over the years. They just, some of them just keep coming back on a seasonal basis. But the attempt is there to try to get them to take care of it.
Well, I think, I think what we need as a council is, I mean, the two of you need to tell us whether eight hours is enough or whether it's 15 hours or 20 hours or no hours. You know, we're not in the office looking at this, so.
Yeah, I'd say you definitely need to fill this position, and that's why I'm here. I recognize that, I think Kurt recognizes that internally, getting these things done. And I think what we need to do, given the budget season, is at least look at, you know, eight where it's at. And like I said, if I can negotiate, I'll go for 10 if I can, and push that to 10. And then I think we need to have a serious revisit next budget cycle, next time around. And if not sooner, if you want to revisit this, you know, halfway through, that's fine too. But I suggest, you know, in the budget process next year, we revisit this to look at 15 hours or just status quo. But definitely a reopener and look at it.
So I think the council needs some justification as how many hours you're going to do. We need to know what he does, and none of us seem to know what he really does, I don't anyway.
Mike, is there a job description?
Certainly, yes. Yeah, you know, I've-
Can you put it on the next agenda with the job description and some more information on it?
Yeah, I'd like to. Sure.
You know what, and give us the planning and zoning administrators' job description too, so that... Because it used to be that the building official was the zoning enforcement-
It flipped around a couple of times over. It used to be there was a part-time zoning enforcement officer. And then it flipped to the billing official did the zoning enforcement. He had a part-time billing official at the time too. So, and then it went basically as a standalone, that got changed. We had somebody for 20 hours a week. It was, last time we filled it before Bud was in it, to get a certified zoning enforcement officer, we couldn't even find one. We got someone that was in the process of doing it. For the smaller hours, sometimes it's tough to find the person. To be honest with you, we ended up with Bud. He was able to fit us in. He was doing part-time somewhere else, and it seemed to work. I mean, at least, you know, we had the position filled and there was enforcement that was taking place. But it's a bunch of things that sort of get rolled into there. And a lot of it depends on, and I would think, if we're looking for somebody, it's who's available? What are their hours if they can work with us? Because a lot of these people, they may do it sometimes in a couple towns. And if we get someone like that and the hours work, that would be ideal in my way. And it's the quality, you want a certified zoning enforcement officer. There's a lot of legal technicalities, and someone that's been around is definitely worth a whole lot more and gets a lot more done than somebody that's pretty new and green at it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Al too, you know, we've talked about it a bunch of times, but the ordinance is, like, I've been getting letters from David Lane and a few other areas where there's, you know, unregistered cars. It almost falls into like a blight situation, which we've talked about.
I know, and we, like, the last time we talked about that, you know, we were told by everybody, including the town attorney, that we have plenty of rules, we just need to enforce them. Rather than add another rule that doesn't get enforced. I, you know, that's what, that's my memory of what happened the last time we talked about.
No, you're right, I remember that.
Yeah, I don't want to call it a blight ordinance, but I guess that's what it was. And we were told, you don't have to add any more laws or rules, we just have to enforce what we have. So, you know, maybe we're going to have to look at the eight, you know, maybe eight hours isn't enough. But again, whoever we get is going to have to be held accountable for what they're doing.
I wanted to say something, I don't-
Oh, don't argue with me.
I may not, I may have said that, but I also drafted-
You may or may not.
Now, look, I also drafted two blight orders.
You did?
And recommended them. But if you, but in the nature of this discussion, if you're not enforcing, or there are some people feeling we're not enforcing the regulations that we have to the capacity that we should be, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to add new laws. A lot of it is overlap. But I remember when we actually condemned and destroyed an antique house across from the post office on 17. We were able to do that under the help and safety and police power. Clearly, that would have been a blighted property. I don't think it made any difference in terms of the timing. So.
Thank you, John. Okay, item B, secretary position for park and rec department.
Yeah, also, this is a vacancy, and I'd like to move on filling that one as well. And that's in the parks and recs secretary position.
Is there any possibility, since we have to advertise and get a new person, that those hours can go to the same hours as all the other secretarial staff, 8:30 to 4:30?
No, it's a possibility, it's something we're negotiating right now.
Okay. Because I'd like to, and the administrators, because there is no union for the administrators, to have the administrators work the same hours as all of the other administrators in town hall, the 8:30 to 4:30.
All right. Item C, animal control report.
That's just the monthly report, and I think we agreed we'd have Donna here for every quarter, which would be the June meeting. But in the meantime, you get these reports.
This is the same one we got during budget season?
Right.
Right, I mean, nothing's changed on this from the budget season.
Did you want to report on your meeting?
I was going to mention, Michael, Anthony, myself did go to Branford and met with First Selectman Cosgrove. And I believe it was Donna from the animal shelter and the finance director.
Jim Finch.
Jim Finch. This is not really a regional. This is more of, we're filling capacity that they have. And to me, it appears that they're almost a vendor providing a service. And it brings to my mind, I don't know if we should be going out to bid for this service, or Anthony, I believe, and Michael had the idea of with a sliding scale, rather than paying this big, large fee. We have really no say on the budget. We have one representative, we tried to get another one, which they weren't prepared to allow us. So we have that one representative that we met. We did ask for these reports, and basically, we're paying, I think, 105,000 a year.
That's the budget for this year.
For this year.
14, 15.
Yeah, and that's pretty much it. So I know Michael did look around a little bit. I mean, for us to start up our own would make sense. But we may, I don't know, want to look around at other towns, or if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, firsthand, I don't get any complaints at all in terms of how, you know, non-responsive, responsive, anything at all. I mean, you know, I get a lot of complaints that come through, sure, council members and everyone seated here probably gets calls from residents. Animal control is not one that I take in my office. So it leads me to believe that they are responsive and they're doing a very good job. So the question for the council is, you know, is 105 something you can stomach? Or do you think you, you know, you can do something cheaper somewhere else? And, you know, I just don't see that path to a cheaper alternative at this point. And with, combined with what I believe to be an excellent service, and without, you know, complaints or anybody calling in, that we're being well-served at this point. And there is representation, if I, this is a regional, so you don't get per capita or anything like that. It's a courtesy they have to allow the council to appoint a person from a resident here to serve. And the reports are coming in, and that individual is also coming in to give a verbal report every quarter, so.
The only thing we could possibly try is tracking it, you know, I believe the calls probably go through our dispatch. You know, you could try, you know, possibly recording it for accountability on our end if we wanted to.
So we have a, we have a contract with them that ends till I won?
Is it an annual?
I believe so.
Okay, so-
2030, automatically renewal unless you give 60 days notice.
What would the hurt be in contacting Guilford and asking them if they would be interested in treating us as a vendor?
Yeah, no, no harm, no harm in asking at all. I think, and it comes back again to that word, service, if they have the capacity.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, and we don't know until we make the call.
But if, you know, if we're not considered a regional and partners with them down there, and they're just supplying a service, I kind of agree with what Anthony was saying. If it's a service, we should be getting bids for it. If anyone else has the ability to do it.
Right.
Which they may not.
Right. Yeah, I can do the survey and call the local area within the-
The Townsend borders, East Cave is North Haven, Guilford, we already know Branford.
I mean, they may have something that they may, you know, I don't know if anyone else has a new facility and maybe has the time and they want to take it on for less money.
Worth looking into, I think. I mean, I know we can't run it for 105,000, but it's still a lot of money for the amount of calls we have.
About 700, 900 per call.
More expensive than the ambulance.
I'm going to retire as the dog catcher in town. I like dogs anyway.
Item D, potato and corn festival update.
Yeah, this is the memo here for you, that question about the cooker that's come up before. And the coordinators here, Roseanne is here, and Mr. Sokoloff is here. They'll also put some time in terms of researching this. So they can, as the memo says, they can proceed with continuing to rent with the cooker. Or if the council would allow, I think it's a good investment to look at purchasing either used or new and to go forward. But they would like to let you know that they've done some research. And in terms of long-term, beyond the potato and corn festival, there are other festivals, other events, I should say, not festivals, but other events that it could be used for. So the question is, I guess, a couple of questions, whether you think that's a wise investment to go new or used. And personally, I don't think you want to go used with the prices there, and I think you want to go new. But whether or not that's, you know, a smart move, and if you do, you could fund it a couple of different ways, I think. And in terms of their funds that they have, or a combination of their funds and capital funds, and make it a town asset, if you will. And if you made it a town asset versus strictly exclusively to a festival asset, then you could say, okay, touch a truck or any, they have a long list, I can't remember all of them, but the school could use it, you could use it. Town council could set a policy to say, yeah, you know, it's- School events, high school, you know, wherever you want to go with this in terms of getting, or maybe you want to limit it to festival use only and two other events, or three other events. However you want to craft that and get whatever kind of use you want to get out of it.
Wasn't this, this was on the agenda not that long ago, right?
A year ago.
Last year. It was a year already?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's whether or not you're okay with-
Last time it was 12,500, but it wasn't spec.
No, that was a new one.
But if you read this, they're saying it's too small.
It was half the size.
Yeah.
That's, part of the problem is they realized that we'd never done the job that we needed for the festival.
All right, wasn't the spec.
So.
So now we have it twice the size of what we talked about last year.
Well, it's, yeah, it's doubled in price.
We're going to talk about this year.
And they can rent Good to Go's cooker for $2,500. But the repair will come off the rental, so $2,500 to rent it. $28,000, simple math is about 11 years of usage. And then we've got an 11-year-old cooker. So, and we're expecting $28,000 upfront.
Well, and the other issue is, that I have using the festival funds, is what we talked about, about do they have enough in the funds that if we had a festival that was completely rained out, we couldn't hold it? What were their obligations that they would have to pay for? And to buy a new one and use up, you know, three-quarters of the fund- And to buy a new one and use up, you know, three-quarters of the fund, I mean, you'd have less than twenty thousand dollars left in that fund to buy this new cooker. And then it's the whole maintenance, where do you store it, who's in charge of it? You know, some of the events on the back here where they said, who could utilize it? I honestly don't see it going to high school sporting events. There is no booster club. They have a concession stand there that they run, that the school runs, and uses, I don't see it being used at sporting events at all. Some of these, I really do not see them as viable options. I'm not in favor of buying one at this time.
I'm not in favor of buying one at this time either. I think they should do it while we have it down. And that's the fact of Good to Go when they finish.
I can't see what changed since the last time we talked about, to be honest with you.
Well, I can't speak to them, but when I was at one of the meetings, and you can certainly ask them directly, but I think the concern is that the life expectancy of the one that they have, or one that they're renting right now, and that they have to put money into it, just to kind of shore it up, to get it ready for the festival. And I think they're worried, I don't work it, you know, I've seen it in action, but, you know, I think they're worried it's going to, it's going to give out, you know, at some point, and they'll be stuck trying to look for it. And maybe we cross that bridge when we get to it, I guess, but, so. You know, they can-
So anyway, I might as well weigh in. I wouldn't support buying one this year, because, you know, this year's kind of a, you know, we kind of went all-in this year, or the Potato Fest went all-in, and they've hired, you know, they've hired a person, and, and, you know, it was only maybe, it wasn't too long ago when we were having a discussion whether we were going to go forward with the festival at all. And the director was like, she couldn't do it, and, oh, well, our problem. So I think that, I think that I would say, rent it this year, fix it. And then I would personally look at how much money they make this year going all-in. You know, we're going all-out. We've got, we've got our crackerjack in charge of trying to make this thing work. And I'll just say this, that in my own business, I look at things, and I have my whole life, if I have to rent something three times, I'd buy it. I agree that you have to keep it inside, and, but that's what we have Franny for. So, so I would say, rent it this year, but I would be willing to look at it next year if by some way we made a hundred thousand dollars this year, or something. If we're, go backwards, or don't make any money, then I wouldn't be supporting it. But if this thing, if they're making money and can swing it, I would, I wouldn't close the door on it completely-
That's fair.
-next year. But, you know, we'll have new numbers and all that. But this year, I would, I support them renting it.
That's fair.
Okay. All right. Item E, the CIP bleachers, Totka Valley Park Football Field update.
Yeah, Rose had raised this issue in terms of the bleachers and getting it approved, you know, through, through the funds that we have in there. And I think it was a smart, you know, smart question to look at this in terms of trying to get this, this done in time for the football season in August. So, you know, I hope you'll concur with the reasoning behind that, and, you know, we can, we can push forward with getting these ordered and delivered, and, and put up in time.
But, so do we have to wait until July first, when the budget goes, when the CIP budget goes into effect? Or can these, I mean, because there's a four- to five-week delivery time, and they have to be assembled. It's according to the literature that we have here.
I'd say July first.
So that's, so that's when the purchase order can be cut, is July first, because it's state funding? Because this is coming out of the, okay. So as, as long as this gets done, because if you go too far into July, they're not going to be ready for August.
Sort of like have it, have it loaded and ready to go for right out of the gate. So, I mean, not, we won't have it covered, but we'll have the order, yeah. It'll be cut July first, you know?
Okay.
You do have a little time, though, you know, the, mentioned football, that starts the first of August, but the games aren't-
They start towards the end of August.
Right. So we have a little, we have a couple of weeks in August, too, so.
Right. I mean, they probably won't get installed or whatever until after the Potato Fest, anyway. I mean, if we have them for the Potato Fest and we needed to use them for any reason, fine. But now, the ones for the other fields, because I noticed there were some on the Mill Road field. Did those come from another place, location? Because I noticed two sets of bleachers on Mill Road. So they must have taken those from another area or field.
I would have to ask Fran, and he's, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. And then my other question on Memorial Field, or Memorial, the courts, I don't know if it's the basketball courts, the baseball fields there. The only question that I have is if they're for the basketball courts. I would not spend money on bleachers for the basketball courts, since we applied for the Steve Grant. And if we get any money, then those bleachers should be wrapped into that, the redoing of the basketball and tennis courts. So that those bleachers should be used at another field, location.
Okay. Well, I'll review that with Fran, find out where the location is, and what happened, or where the, so there's two sets at Mill Road?
Yes.
Two sets, okay.
They're just the three high ones, which is what they're proposing for there, anyway.
Item nine, community events and presentations.
Where they parade.
Where they parade.
Yeah, you want to say a few words? May twenty-sixth, Northford and the Town, St. Monica's Church be there at nine o'clock, starts at ten.
And they're also doing the flags for veterans.
Correct.
And you also have, I think, in your packet, the book of, I mean, I'm sorry, the art exhibit. Schools, K through twelve art exhibit is tomorrow night.
Item ten, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence, again. Any citizen statements, petitions, correspondence? Item A, letter from Robinson and Cole regarding cell tower at eighty-eight Parsons and Chill Road, Northford.
Yeah, these are just, you know, FYIs, that these are, there seems to be a few of these cell tower notifications of upgrades, additional equipment, things of that nature. So just to keep you in the loop and what's happening. Because also, you'll see something later on in the agenda concerning a request on one of our parcels. But this one, I think, actually, I think I recently received another one on the tower over on Commerce Drive. The tower there, yeah. So it seems to be the season where these are coming in. Members at the Council of Governments, other members from other towns mentioned the same thing, that they're getting papered with all of these requests and notifications, that maybe it's because of the build-out of a new, you know, four G, whatever it is in terms of the technology, that they're trying to build capacity and also fix the dead zones or dead spots. I wouldn't be surprised if we see a couple more coming in.
Letter from Deputy Republican Leader Vincent Candelora regarding Steve Grant application for the courts. We all have it on our packet. It's a letter from our state representative on our behalf to the Office of Policy and Management, trying to get us favorable outcome on the basketball courts and tennis courts. And we also received a letter from Senator Ed Meyer that also went to Megan Cowell at the Office of Policy and Management. And he's also citing favorable, favorable consideration for the, our application. Item D, letter from State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management regarding approval of funding requests.
Yeah, they were just, you know, acknowledging those four items that's in the, in the letter with respect to our capital improvement list.
So is, this was last year's, or the current year's?
Thirteen fourteen, correct, current year.
Did we do the re-roofing of the Northford Pavilion yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Was that one that was Franny was going to do?
Uh, I think you got some prices from contractors.
Okay.
Okay. Item eleven, resignations and appointments.
I'll move to table, appointments A and B, and, oh, and N, I'm sorry, A, B, and N, until the next meeting.
Second, then.
A, B, and N.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
So now we're gonna go to item C, appointment. Louis Fonda Senior Permanent Project Building Committee as alternate, term to expire eleven thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Move to appointment.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item D, reappointment. William Delacamera, Agricultural Committee, term to expire nine thirty, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item E, reappointment. Mary Bigelow to Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, term to expire six thirty sixteen. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item F, reappointment. Joanne Wentworth, Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, term to expire south of-
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Fuji, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Epstein.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item G, reappointment. Ashley Joyner to Conservation and Inland and Wetland, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item H, reappointment. Nancy, this is gonna be, what is it?
Santioli.
Santioli, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item I, reappointment. Arthur Feldman, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fuji. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item J, reappointment. Mary Bigelow, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item K, reappointment. Elizabeth Kaplan, Library Board, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Counselor Fuji, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Reappointment. Carol Davidson, Library Board, term to expire twelve one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Counselor Fuji, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item M, reappointment. Maria Olson, Library Board, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item O, reappointment. Melinda Fonda, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fuji, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Reappointment, reappointment. John Duty, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
So moved, seconded.
There was a close draw. Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Fuji. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include the appointment of Bill Chody to East Shore District Health Department. And the reason why I didn't get here, I didn't realize we were doing all these appointments tonight, but we haven't had a second person at the East Shore District Health from North Haven in a long time.
Second motion.
Thank you.
Move to add.
An appointment. William Chody.
William Chody to the East Shore District Health Board by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
I think it's a two-year appointment, but I'm not positive. Can we put that in after?
Check with the town clerk.
Thank you.
We'll check with the town clerk as far as the-
Thank you.
The date, the term.
You need the motion to amend the agenda first, and then the motion to appoint him.
Right, that's-
Right.
The motion is to amend the agenda.
So roll call.
I'm sorry, can you repeat who made-
Oh, sure.
Joanne?
Sure. Deputy Mayor Wentworth, and then it was Counselor Fawnin. And that was for Bill Chody on the East Shore Health.
Right.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Reappointment. William Galdensey, Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire five thirty, two thousand sixteen.
I'll move it, seconded.
Moved by Counselor Fuji, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Phil Chody to the East Shore District Health Department. Term to expire when the town clerk fills it in. I think it's two years, but I'm not sure.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fawnin, roll call.
Mayor Candelara?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
I just, before we move off of this, I just have a few requests, Mike, can you find out on the Park and Rec Commission, what their meeting, how many meetings they haven't met because they don't have a quorum? I just, I have issues on both sides, both parties, Democrats and Republicans, not coming to the meeting, so they don't have quorums, and it's creating issues with residents because the meetings aren't happening. Thanks.
Okay. Item twelve, unfinished business, discussion and action. Item A, update to the defined benefit plan documents, that's still tabled, I believe, Mike, let's table it.
No.
Item A. Item B, department restructuring to create human resource plus purchasing and risk management.
Is that a executive session, signing, or? John, would that be executive session?
The way this is labeled, I would say not, and if it were, you would have to give notice to virtually every department head in the town, that they're going to be discussed and that they would have the right to have that discussion in public session. I understand that, that there may be an executive session on personnel, but it involves focus on one particular position. So I think this was a, this was a request of the council to see if there could be a, an umbrella department encompassing those three areas.
Right, yeah, I think Al had raised that, it was during the budget process, we wanted to bring it back for, for the next meeting, we didn't get to it, so here it is for the May meeting, you know, I've done some research to look at it, and different towns, you know, handle it differently, can it be done? Sure, it can be done, it is being done, it's just whether or not this is something that council wants to pursue, and, you know, getting more information in terms of structure, but there's some preliminary information as to other, how other towns handle it, and it's kind of all over the board.
So since, since I, you know, brought this concept, brought it up, you know, going forward, we have a lot of, we have a lot of things to, to handle and be ready for, you know, with the Affordable Care Act, and how we go forward with our insurances, from all the surrounding towns that, that I've talked to, you know, right around us, most of them are at least somewhat self-insured, and the, some of the issues with being self-insured is that, you know, you've got to get your employees on board, and by all accounts, we would save money by being self-insured, and we'd save money every year for the rest of the town's history. So, you know, we have to, you know, with a stagnant grand list, we have to be creative in how we go forward, and, you know, if that means that we have to spend a little more money to either create a umbrella position or add a position, I think that we have to have these, have this sort of a discussion. I talked to a couple of towns right around us that aren't on the list, you know, I talked to Guilford and Branford, and only because I have contacts there that are, that I believe, and I, and I also talked, you know, my sister-in-law was the finance director for the town of Madison and brought them through self-insuring twenty years ago, when I sat on the council and said, hey, we should be probably moving to self-insuring, and we would have saved millions of dollars if we had. So, if I'm gonna volunteer my time to be here, it's time that we start being proactive and, and figure out how we're gonna get through this with the Affordable Care Act, with the Cadillac plans, and from my research, it's all with human relations and risk management. Now, I don't know whether, you know, Guilford had a, you know, both Guilford and Branford, when they started, had one position, they both have moved, and that, so that was, they had one position of purchasing, risk management, and human relations, and they have all moved to multiple people now, but when they initially did it, it was one. So, I don't know whether that's possible or not, but if we don't start the conversation, we're gonna be sitting here in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and we are gonna, it's gonna cost us millions of dollars because we did absolutely nothing. Now, I'm open to hear, I mean, it's gonna fall on you, Michael, so if we don't do something like this, what are your plans? How are we going forward? We can't sit here, you know, it's two thousand fourteen, so, you know, I'm all ears, so, I mean, you could tell me that everybody in the other towns are all wet, and we're perfectly fine.
I, I think that there's two things that, you know, the discussion about self-insure, sure, the town can pursue that, I don't think you necessarily need to have a, a department or a reconfiguration or consolidation or restructuring to achieve that. Town, if the town chooses, wants to go down that road, we can explore that road and go down there, it's just, you know, direction of what's more important, getting, getting to, you know, self-insurance and addressing what is to be the, you know, Affordable Care Act and, and the, and the price tag of it down the road, should, should that, you know, whatever that, when that's gonna be and what it's gonna look like, or is it more important to have a restructuring of the, of the department and then have that department address the, address the issue? So, I think you can handle, I think we can go explore self-insured, I don't necessarily know that we need to restructure.
Rather than, than approaching this blindly, are there, is it possible to generate statistics, in-town statistics, of the cost that we're paying for premiums for various insurances that we purchase, and the actual usage or benefits that employees indoor the town receive from those policies? And ideally, if we could see like a five-year study or graph that would show us that, I think it might point us in the direction of what it is we might want to consider, what we might want to consider with some sort of catastrophic umbrella coverage over it so that the town's liability is capped at some point, or third, do we want to get away from it altogether and stay out of that business? But I think, conceptually, it sounds nice.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know that historically, moving to some program like this is something that does have a reasonable probability that we're going to actually save money and not hurt ourselves in the process.
Can I add one and a half cents here? I think this is a, an inquiry that you should be making every year. This is the second biggest monetary item that you pay next to salaries for town employees and Board of Education employees. There are many school districts that are self-insured, there are, there are a number that are not self-insured. Whether you're going to save money or not requires somebody to do the investigation. It involves more of an insurance consultant, whomever the town's insurance consultant is, that's the person or entity that should be reviewing the town's insurance package and seeing if there's any way to save money by either going to another insurance company or by going from insured to self-insured. And all the contracts that you have with employee groups will have to be looked at, but as long as the benefits are, depending on what the particular language is on the contract, substantially equal to or better than, or equivalent to, or comparable to, you're gonna be able to change, because this is really the funding mechanism, not about benefits, so, I don't know how much the town uses its insurance consultant, but this is a big question that really should be given to an expert, and you should be looking, in my view, the council should be having this discussion, if not every year, every other year, because prices are changing, Blue Cross is beating out Cigna one year, and the next year it's reversed, and then there's another, you know, there's another fashionable plan design that comes into play, and this is, these are huge money expenditures that you're making, and this is where you're going to, this is where you can save some serious bucks. I agree with the town manager that this is a standalone issue that really has little significance as to how you put it under an umbrella of one or two or three different positions, but it's not something really that I think you can expect anybody in-house to do a, some kind of a study. There are people in this business, in this insurance business, and hopefully our, whomever our consultant is, that person would be able to give us advice regularly.
Wasn't it H.D. Seeger?
Right. Dave Matthews.
The calculation's been done many times, we've looked at self-insurance, looked at self-insurance several times over the years, and the numbers never really worked out, we're at the, right at the bubble of the population size, where, where we were not quite big enough to absorb any significant losses, so we chose to stay fully insured, but Dave, Dave Matthews from Seeger does calculations, in fact, he did it, I think, believe, this year, again, and there is savings, you're right, the self-insurance is a funding mechanism. So in year one, you will achieve savings, but on a year-to-year basis, your claims are your claims.
Absolutely.
So you may save money in year one.
It all depends on your claims.
Exactly, but don't expect that savings you have in year one to continue in year two, three, four, you're gonna be stagnant.
I totally agree, but a town's life is how long? And I wanna see, show me the town that was self-insured and then went back, and I don't want the town that got greedy, by all accounts with self-insuring, you have to fund your account and you can never touch it.
Exactly.
Now, that's one thing that the town council has been good at.
Excellent.
You know, we don't, we, we fund our pensions and we don't raid them, so I trust that the town council will run it right.
Correct.
And you know what? Guilford, right next door, raided their
Oh, yeah.
And they got in trouble. And Branford and Madison, they don't touch it, and so it is a savings going forward if you do it right.
Correct.
Okay? You're way ahead of the game twenty years from now than if you didn't self-insure, and that, from what I'm told, that statistically, that's correct, I agree. If we decided to be self-insured and we had eight catastrophic illnesses in year two or year three.
Right.
It would be a bad move.
Well, then, to go back to Joe's point, you do buy stop-loss insurance, it depends how conservative you want to be on your stop-loss.
So, so I think maybe out of tonight, the first thing we do is have him come in and next minute, and, and talk to us, and, and then relook at it now, and then tell us what we are, where we're at, four or five years down the road and stuff like that.
We had a meeting two months ago on the same topic, myself, Don, and he met, and looked at the numbers, and, except, in year one savings to go self-insured, there is probably a ten percent savings. What's more significant, to go back to your Cadillac tax issue, is to look at a high deductible health plan.
That's what, going forward, what
That's what's going forward, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna save you the money to avoid or minimize your Cadillac tax.
Right, I mean, so I heard that, and I heard right in Branford, that, and, you know, and don't quote me, that they have created a plan that's just under a Cadillac plan that, and then that's where the human resources comes in, they have sold that to their employees, and then the employees are buying if they want to keep a Cadillac plan.
Exactly.
Okay? So that's where, in having discussions with Branford Town Hall and Guilford Town Hall, they're all telling me, we need a human resource person to present this to the employees and get them to sign on, just like with an HSA.
Right.
You'll see people, you'll see employees that don't want an HSA, but yet, most of them that have it and live with it, if, you know, they're like, hey, this is pretty cool.
Right.
After the fact, but you, all it takes is one or two people in the union
Right, oh, sure.
To say, oh, this is terrible, don't do it, and they're afraid of it.
Right. Well, going back to the, the initial discussion, we, we pay this gentleman twenty thousand dollars a year, and that's what he does, he does the numbers, as John suggested, he would do the sales pitch to the employees kind of thing, that's covered by his fee, so if you're creating
Okay.
This person as, as a result of that discussion, then it's not money that's well-spent, because this guy's already doing it for us, or could do it for us if we go down that path. Again, we've done, we did it probably a month or two ago, as we're doing the July first renewal, Don and I met with him, and we went over the whole thing about self-insurance, and again, it's right about on the cusp, but we can look at it, you know, in greater grain of earth, and the, the lion share the savings, because quite honestly, our family plan as of July first is over twenty-seven-five, which is what the Cadillac tax is thresholded on, but again, there's been no talk about, I think we went to a seminar Friday on it, are they gonna graduate that based on CPI, so that in seventeen, eighteen, maybe it's thirty, or whatever number they, they pick, are they gonna, you know, somehow, is that a floating number? It's been twenty-seven-five since the ACA's been talked about, which is going on four or five years now. So, the twenty-seven-five is not a realistic number, because as time progresses, everybody's premium's gonna, you know, progress, but don't, don't feel we haven't talked about it, because we've been doing some
No, I, I'm not saying you haven't talked about it, I'm saying
It hasn't got to your level yet, because Hasn't got to your level yet, because it hasn't.
We haven't talked about it, and we need to talk about it.
No doubt about it. As John mentioned also, it's one of the largest expenditures the town has. So we do take it seriously, and we have looked at it, again, a couple times about, also about shipping carriers. You know, we price it out to say, okay, we go here to test the market, okay, Cigna, give us a price.
And this may or may not be true, but with that Cadillac plan, and I think the reason that, and I'm not sure of this, I mean, nobody, I don't know who really understands it, maybe our insurance guy does, but the employees, if you have a Cadillac plan, then you may be paying income tax on that plan as well.
Right.
So that's how they get the employees to say, okay, let's come in just under a Cadillac plan, and if we want one, we'll pay the difference. Because it's not just the towns that are going to lose.
Right.
The employees make, so, you know, I mean, I don't know how many people here that want to have another 27,000 added on their taxable income.
Correct. And the other thing too, is I went to another seminar last week, and just like this whole thing from the beginning, a lot of the regulations aren't even created yet. So it's on the fly, you're creating regulations, you can't even tell people, okay, this is going to happen definitively, because it's all speculative stuff.
I agree. And the way things are going, it probably will be pushed back.
Yeah. Pushed back, or inflated some basis.
You know, I just, I think that the whole council, you know, we all know that we have to start somewhere here. So I think it'd be good to start with the insurance.
Right.
And have him explain how, you know, his thoughts on the insurance, and then going forward with the.
HSA or HRA?
Yeah. Yep.
Gotcha.
So that works for me. I don't know where the rest of you are.
Good idea, then, to invite Dave to the next meeting, if possible. If not, if the schedule permits, May 20th, if not, the meeting in June.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would prefer the June meeting, just because I'm not going to be here at the May 20th, and I'm very interested in this. So that's just my personal.
Okay. June, you?
June.
Everybody should be here.
Yeah. Everybody should be here. Is there any other discussion? Is that it? Okay. Item C, Gov. Deals, Fire Apparatus, Auction.
Yeah, this was the item that came up the last, last meeting, and I don't think we got closure in terms of what you wanted to do with that, knowing that it's a, potentially, if it goes to auction, 5,000, 5,500. Do you want to proceed that way? And then, you know, retain the money, or send the money on, or a portion of the money to this organization, this South Central Regional Accident Reconstruction Team? Or do you just want to let the rescue truck go to the, to that organization? Because there is value, and that's what we were trying to establish, how much value. And there's no guarantee, but if we sent it to auction, it's going to get something. And, you know, I guess it's just sort of a scale of, you know, do you want to make, do you want to send the whole, the whole truck that's valued at 5,500, or do you want to sell it and then give them a check for 1,000, or some portion thereof?
I mean, is the truck something they can use?
Yes, it is. And that's why, my understanding, it is something they can use.
Yeah.
I think if they can use the truck, but $5,000, we should send them the truck.
Right. I agree.
But in looking at this, and I know John ruled on this, or didn't rule on it, you talked about it. You always get nervous when I say what you rule.
I'll remind you of what you ruled.
No. So in reading transfer or selling, I know, so can the town manager sell a fire truck? Or does the town council have to vote to sell or give a fire truck away?
Well, it's covered, the charter provision is there, or, excuse me, the ordinance provision is there. The town manager has chosen to put it up for your discretion. I'm not, I don't recall whether, at that price level, at $5,000, whether it actually involves, or requires the council approval. I would intuitively always ask the councils for its approval. But it's a bidding process. It's subject to the same bidding and.
Okay, so who can give the truck away?
Well, the truck is owned by the town. If it's owned by the town.
So then the town council would have to vote to give the truck away?
I would always say that. If it's not clear in the ordinance, I would always say that.
I think that's a good rule.
And that, do you have to write something?
Associations on the buildings, town loans, the.
Bill of sale of some kind.
Right. And then some of that holds us harmless, or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We need a motion to.
Yes, I think that would be in order.
I'll make a resolution to donate the truck to the South Central Regional Accident Reconstruction Team, second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
And, John, you just write up something for this?
Sure. I'll confer with the town manager, whoever we're giving this item to, and we'll put together a.
Full furnace?
A whole furnace, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Item D, Proposed Tax Collection Policy Draft.
Good evening. As you recall, the town council hired a person to come in and review the tax department as far as policies and procedures. And this is basically in response to his inquiries. Basically, all it's doing is putting the common, the current practice, I should say, on paper, so that the council can view the entire process, and then have an understanding of what exactly happens. Just want to walk you through a couple of the steps. Basically, the calendar is that the bills are go out in June, first half is due in July, as we all know, second half is due in January. As of February, those people that haven't paid for that year get what's called a delinquent notice. That says basically, Anthony, you forgot to pay your second half of your bill, or your bill, you know, did you misplace it? And a lot of people with the two payment system lose the bill, and they come in and make good at that point. I'd also like to mention that at that time, what we've been using the last couple of years is the students from the Life Skills Program. They come in, they set up the chairs, and about 3,000 delinquent notices go out, and they do it in one day. There's about maybe a dozen of them here. They bring a pizza lunch over, and they have a great time doing it, and it really is helpful. Saves us a lot of time and aggravation. That's February. Those people that don't pay in March gets what's called a demand letter. It's a little more forceful. It says, Anthony, wake up. If you don't pay your bill, we're going to send the marshal after you. That brings some more people in. April comes around, Anthony doesn't pay his bill still. We make tax warrants up, and we give them to the marshal. The council has decided to use Marshal Longobardi, per John's recommendation. He comes in and gets the warrants. He came in, in April, got the warrants. They're a 60-day warrant. So they're good through June 30th, basically. He has till June 30 to collect the warrant. At that point, in our current mentality, that's where the process ends. Once the marshal's exhausted his efforts, they come in, and they go onto the suspense list, and we get them, basically, when people have to re-register cars down the road. And what we'd like to implement is another step of a collection agency. And again, it's an attempt to, you know, get more tax dollars in. And I'm disappointed, Vinnie, this is Vinnie's baby, obviously, as we all know. But again, basically, the collection agency would be another arm we could use. And so after the marshal's warrants of 60 days expire, our proposal is to give those delinquent taxpayers to a collection agency and let them have at it. Again, all those are no cost to the town, were made whole for our tax dollars. The debtor pays the additional fees. There are, there are some collection agencies that focus on delinquent taxes. There's one who we'd like to have come in at the next meeting to answer any questions or concerns the council may have before we go down that path and adopt the policy. If you can maybe feel comfortable talking to that particular firm, who specializes in municipal collections, the French gentleman who runs the firm is a former collector, I believe, in West Haven. Just to get, you know, his spin on it. What the interesting thing, or the other thing that's going to be up for discussion is, if we turn these over to a collection agency, everybody that's on the suspense list now has gone through a marshal. And as you can see, the marshal's collection percentages, historically, over the years, they vary. Some years it's better than others. You're able to collect taxes for 15 years, which puts it back to, where are we now, 2012, grand list, I can't do that, 97, 98? Well, if we went to you and said, Don Fuji, you had a car in 1998, and you sold it, tax bill's outstanding still, what are you going to say? I sold that car.
Right.
Give me proof, Don. From 1998? You're nuts.
Tax and a half.
That's going to happen. So the question is, how many years do you want to give to the collection agency off the bat? Two years, three years? Well, it's fresh in people's memory. So if they do, they did sell a car in 2010, 11, 12, maybe, it might be readily available to find documentation. So first.
With that decision, can we get the number, like how much money?
Sure. Yeah, we can get how much is out there still, sure.
How much of that is out there, you think?
You've got hundreds, about 15 years, you've got a ton of money. But the problem is, you've never done it. So a collection agency is going to come in here, and when I talk over towns, they say, do the 15-year.
So just, because I, so I understand this. Like, I thought that that stayed with the motor vehicle, and you couldn't register cars if you had. There's always a way around it.
If you register one way under Donald Fuji, one way under Dee Fuji, one way under.
Donald Junior, Donald the Third.
It's all different names.
Dee Fuji, go on and on. There's been a license number now, so.
Well, it was, it was talk.
We used to do that years ago, but.
There was talk about, maybe 15 years ago, to do it by Social Security number.
Right.
And that's a home run.
Sure.
But the civil liberty people said that's an infringement of people's social, you know, that's the only one number you get in your whole life.
Everybody else has.
So every car you get, everybody knows already, you're probably already. Only one, every car you get tied to that one number, no matter how you did it.
Yeah.
And sometimes the name is spelled wrong. So it's a whole different account. So people get around the system, but one number you can't go around.
Right.
That's the ideal way. That's, if things were perfect, that's the way you would solve the problem. But there was a lot of uproar that that was not.
But, I mean, 15 years is a lot of people, it's a lot of files. I wouldn't be surprised if some, if not all of you, get a call from someone saying, hey, I just got this.
Now, the procedures you just talked about, is that for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle, or just personal property and motor vehicle?
It's really personal property and motor vehicle.
Okay. So it's not real estate?
Real estate goes to the town attorney. That's always there. You're always going to collect that one way or another.
Well, no.
Well.
We got.
Your back, John. Oh, well, yeah, without one exception.
Well, so far. You're right. By, by, never mind.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about.
I have a question on the real estate. Why, when, because, you know, a few weeks back there, we had one that was going to go to auction, and then it didn't. But I read the state statutes on it, and I was like, we don't have to use the town attorney. Your office can do it.
Really?
We can do a tax thing.
You got to go to court.
You don't have to go to court on land.
Not on a foreclosure. A foreclosure of land is a court action.
All right. I'll bring, I'll bring the state statute in and show it to you. When you read the thing, it says that the town tax department has to do the certain things with the letters and stuff, and then the town can hold an auction, and there's no court involved. And there isn't? I'll tell you what.
Maybe a tax lien, but not a.
I'll bring it in and show it to you.
Okay.
So I guess.
Hey, John, it won't be the first time that I've corrected you.
You're on my.
Okay. Get back on point.
All right. So now I'm going to bring it in and read it at the next meeting.
Go ahead.
It is a state statute. And it says that, you know, so my only question is, so you've got a guy that's down and out. By going through the courts and everything, it's another 20,000 or 30,000. And when I read this, there's two ways that you can do it, but the town's tax departments can do it.
Well, go back to your first comment. We, we have a mentality in this town, we're very lenient.
I agree.
We, we work with people. We give $50 a month, we'll stay with that. We have people on payment plans. Some people are never going to get caught up. But again, how, do you want to be the big bad over chicken, you know, grandma out of her house? I don't think so. So we work with people. We have a ton of payment plans people have already in place. So don't think we're going to kick the average Joe out of his house. I mean, I think, I think that case was the actual person that went to a foreclosure sale. Many have gone to John's office, and simply by getting a letter from the town attorney, people have got on payment plans or paid their bill. That was the first one, I think, right?
Yeah.
That's ever gone to.
Well, you had one, John, that went, it was that piece of land, Cheryl Ferguson. But it actually went to foreclosure, and it did, but I guess the judge rejected it based on the offer.
Yeah, there was too much equity in the property.
Yeah.
And the offer was much too low.
That's the only one, to date, that's gone that direction.
Right. So we have, we're very lenient working with people, you know, we're very amicable in trying to solve people's, you know, realizing that people have, you know, difficult situations and stuff. But it doesn't negate the fact that the job is to collect tax dollars. So by implementing that, another step of the collection agency, it's another, another tool we want to use to try to bring more tax dollars in. So are you on board with having a guy come in next meeting to at least bounce questions off of, and talk to, and?
I got a question. I mean, if you've got something that's 15 years, I thought you could only go after somebody three years by law. Like, if you don't make an attempt to collect money in three years, you can't chase it out tonight.
Now, remember, these have all gone, bills have been 15 years. These have all gone through a marshal.
Right.
Not only have they, have they ignored tax collectors' bills and notices, demands, they've ignored the marshal's demands and alias tax warrants. So they may have moved.
Gotcha.
People are, again, change of address is a common one. People move out of state, out of town.
So we already attempted to collect this money.
Exactly.
This isn't a surprise.
No, no, this has been out there. But again, this is this new tool.
Some people could be deceased.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
A lot of them are dead, yeah. That happens a lot.
Definitely.
This is, the statute of limitations is five times longer than a felony.
Yeah. Is it just for tax? Is that?
Yeah, it's just, it's, you know, for a contract, that's what you're thinking of.
Yeah, I'm thinking of a contract.
If a contract's in writing, it's, it's longer. If it's so-called under a seal, it can be 15 years or something as well. But if it's a regular contract, it's usually five years.
Okay. So we'll have the gentleman come in next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Item E, Michael, Pascasilla East Shore Health District, review and update on services. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well. I guess first, thank you for appointing William Churney to our board. Really appreciate it. Thank you. If it's all right, I have our annual report I'd like to just hand out.
So I wanted to hand that out. I'm not going to go over it, but I just wanted to give you a full flavor of all the public health services that we offer. I guess I could give you a very quick overview on the health district. We are a three-town regional health district. Aside from North Branford, we also serve Branford and East Haven. And we also offer services to the New Haven region for public health preparedness. We run a medical reserve corps, and we have maternal-child health services in the city of West Haven. So a full-time health department, 24/7. We have environmental health services, nursing services, public health education, emergency preparedness, and environmental health. The health inspections, septic wells, complaints, and it's all outlined in the manual. With respect to our budget, it's roughly about $102,000 a year. And we get a staff of 15 people offering those services. So I could go give you a little more information, but I believe you have some questions for me, so maybe that's a starting point. Is there anything I could answer for you?
What was the annual budget number?
It's about $102,000 per year. There is another line item in our budget, a little over $5,000 a year, but that is for mosquito control. All Habitat is a mosquito control contractor. We manage the contract, but that money is paid directly by the towns. It does not come to the health district.
Do you know, do you know in North Branford what you take in in fees and permits, by Do you know, do you know in North Branford what you take in in fees and permits by any chance?
Um, I don't, I don't have that breakdown with me by town. I can certainly get it, I just don't have it with me at this moment.
Is it proven that the mosquito control actually amounts to anything?
Oh, yeah, yes, it does.
Because, I mean, think about it. Everybody that has a puddle of water in their backyard, or an old tire, or whatever, you know, so when they treat it, like, what, what, for, for, so, so for the North Branford end, we got five thousand dollars worth of mosquito treating. Where is it? And, and, you know, it just seems like that's kind of, um, I mean, I've seen the guys, they throw some stuff in catch basins and stuff like that, but there's stagnant water and everywhere. Everybody's house's rain gutter has a puddle in it that will breed mosquitoes. So, so there is data that says that this five thousand dollars in a town the size of North Branford?
I, I could get you some specific, specific data, but if we could talk about mosquito control at a high level. So, we have a lot of wetlands, and we have stagnant water everywhere. We're not going to eliminate the mosquitoes. The only thing we could do is control. And so, some of the control methods we do is lava siding. We don't do adult siding unless we have a, an outbreak of, say, West Nile virus or triple E. So, data shows that if we can control the mosquitoes, it makes it a lot more bearable out there, especially in some of the subdivisions that are adjacent to wetlands. Without doing mosquito control, one, it would be very difficult to be outside without getting attacked. And then, two, when we do have a, um, population of West Nile virus and the mosquitoes, because there's some surveying that, that happens, we go and do targeting in that area and keep the, keep the virus at bay. So, so there is data, again, I don't have it with me, but I could certainly get it.
I think that East Shore Health is instrumental in also our economic growth. You know, when a business comes to town or wants to open, you know, your department or, or, it's part of, very instrumental part of a business opening in town. And I'm just wondering if there's ways we can make it easier, like, you know, 'cause in this economic environment, a lot of people, they're doing it themselves, or they're, you know, they're not going out and getting an architect or a general, a general contractor, let's say. So, they're trying to, you know, save that little bit of money, and it ends up costing them more money down the road because one little thing they miss, and they don't open for a week or two weeks, it creates havoc. So, you know, I was talking to Michael, town manager, about trying to come up with almost like a yellow book, you know, that, things that people can do to help themselves when they do, even just moving from one location to another. You know, I know restaurants or, you know, those type of businesses, it's a big deal.
So, customer service, my background is retail. And so, when I came to East Shore, customer service was one of my number-one priorities, and we have streamlined the process. I will tell you, we're looking at taking credit cards and doing online registrations to make that process as easy as possible. But with approval, let's talk about a restaurant for a second. It's not just our department, it's the building department.
It's the whole office.
It's zoning, it's fire, it's health, sometimes it's some state licenses. One of the number-one problems that we, we do have is with wastewater septic systems. And, you know, Mike, you know, Mike and I have talked, previous manager, Richard Brennigan and I have talked. Public sewers would definitely help, help with economic growth, because the waste has to go somewhere, and restaurants generate a lot of waste. And there is, the laws don't come from us, they come from the state, and we, we just administer them. And so, it's out of our control where they can go and where they can't go. And the laws are always changing. We are the messenger, we don't create the laws. We try to make it as simple as possible, we try to make it as flexible as possible, but, and we're only one signature for the sign-off.
Right.
I think my question would be, are we making it as easy as we can? Or are we hanging our hats on, well, that's a state law, and we have to go by the state law? Because sometimes you have to use your, and I'm not saying that you're, you aren't, but I think sometimes you have to step in and use your judgment and make a field judgment call, and, and, you know, just make a decision, and not say, well, this is a state regulation, and this is what we're doing. Basically, what we're getting at, Michael, is we, we need, we need businesses in our town, and we wanna make it, we don't wanna lose any of the businesses we have, and we wanna do everything we can as a council to bring new businesses into town, 'cause we have a little bit of a grand liz problem. And, uh, that's, that's what we're saying. We're looking for some help, we're looking for some ideas, some support, you know, to, we're not asking anybody to break any rules, but we're asking to put, put our heads together and see what we could do to streamline it, to make it easy, not wait till the last minute and tell somebody, oh, you forgot to do this. You know, tell them the first time you go there, this is what you need to expect to do, to try to, you know, avoid delays. And, and I think that's what we're telling everybody, we're telling the building department, we're telling the zoning. And, and I think, I, I'm only speaking for myself, but I think, you know, that's one of the things that we're trying to, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we all...
Put out there.
Okay.
We all know, I mean, you know, we do get approached out, Rose or me, Joe, all of us, you know, residents will come and complain. We understand, it's not always your fault or whatever department's fault, there's always more to the story.
We know it's a lot of the story.
Right. But what we are doing is trying to be positive and trying to bring businesses into our town.
And we're looking for ways, ideas, and ways to, you know, help, help people, to, to get the word out there that North Branford is friendly to business.
Open for business.
Open for business. You know, we wanna look into bringing sewer, that's one of our big things, the sewers. We think, like, one of the most important things to...
Yeah, bringing sewers down Route Eighty would be...
Yes, I mean, wastewater, sewer striping plants, that would, that's one of the biggest barriers that we, we have. I, and that's, you know, this...
Our north end, Route Eighty is all in swamp.
Yes. So, that's, that's, that's a significant problem, and, you know, even when they were doing Route Eighty over, one of the things that I brought up is, the roads open. Put a pipe in.
Right.
Put a pipe in, but the state said it wasn't in the budget, they didn't wanna do it, and now, when the time comes, it will cost much, much more money. So, publics, public sewers is, is one recommendation, and any way we can support it, and in the past, actually, we have supported it. There were three areas identified, and we talked to the state about seeing if we could bond or...
We have to come up with some stopgaps in those areas too, though. I mean, you know, to bridge the gap, to, we know we have to do it, but we can't have everybody running out of town.
I mean, I, I will tell you that when restaurants change locations, if it's the same owner, we do pro, prorating license fees, and sometimes when people are late, there are late fees, sometimes we'll prorate them, so we're trying to be as user-friendly as possible. I, I will tell you, opening a business is tough sometimes because there are so many different...
Departments.
Departments, and so, maybe one of the things to do is, myself and the other departments could get together, but Mike can review the process and, and see how we could streamline it a little bit better, because there's always room for improvement. I'll be the first one to say that.
Yeah, that's what, I think would be a good idea. Whatever we could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna start pushing hard for sewers down Route Eighty, I think, Kurt.
Before we do anything with the wall field and those buildings, we make sure that's not where the pump gotta go, you know?
Does anybody else have any further questions for Mike? I think we're good. Mike, thank you very much for coming in. We didn't get to talk later on budget.
Thank you, and, you know, just, if I could just leave with this, anytime I do get complaints, just like any department, we get complaints, I assert myself in the process, and I have been known to stop at owners' establishments or call them up and say, what's going on? 'Cause there's always two sides to every story, and I'll be the first one to say, you know, I always review some of the things that we do, and there's always room for improvement, and we're constantly looking for ways for improvement, and anything I could do, I assure you, I will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F. Capital projects, clarification of funding sources.
Yeah, I, I put this on here just looking, you know, to, to clarify the difference between the discussion on the April eighth meeting and the April fifteenth meeting, and it wasn't actually captured specifically, so I thought I'd raise it at this meeting, just so I'm clear, and Anthony's clear, that going, going forward, we're, we're looking at, as I understood it from the April fifteenth meeting, or just to confirm, we're looking at the old proceeds of the old MBIS fund. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, I think the discussion that was had was that because we don't know what the cost was going to be on short-term borrowing against the savings on debt service, and because the MBIS project wasn't closed out yet on there, we were waiting to get more information on both of those items. Anthony anticipated the MBIS project being closed out within sixty days approximately. I don't know what the status of that is at this point in time.
No update.
So, I, I think without having really the numbers in, that we would know, like, if it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars to borrow money to fund these projects, even though that seems like a small amount of money when you look at our budget, I'm not so sure that I would be in, be in favor of spending a hundred thousand dollars when we know that we have the money from the MBIS project.
Right.
But we don't exactly know what that number is yet, and so Anthony had suggested that we wait until that gets closed out.
Right, I, I think the discussion, you know, based on the second page, was my memo back during the budget process, when there was, you know, roughly two-point-six million dollars that potentially could be available for capital projects. So, you know, is the amount you're gonna come back with anywhere near two-point-six million? I, I certainly hope not. We don't know any, any firm numbers, but I think the eight-twenty-six would be a safe bet to take out of that. I guess the, what's bringing it more to the forefront too is the timing of it, where the CIP typically gets approved in August, September timeframe, and Fran wants to jump on the truck right away, let's say. He wants to, you know, put the PO in July first, and get, get the truck running, so maybe he can have it in time for winter season. Hope you wait till September timeframe, that might not happen. So, if, if we're clear on where the funding's gonna come from, whether it is gonna be a short-term, you know, note to get us to that seventeen, eighteen magic year, or we take the cash we have on hand and, and, you know, spend that now. I, I think the cash on hand is probably the safer bet. Again, you know, the two-point-six that's out there, I don't see her coming back and saying, we owe the state, you know, one-point-eight million dollars, I think the six-hundred-thousand or eight-twenty-six would be a safe bet to take out of that proceeds. And then we could tell the people, I, I know that also, like, the, the fire chief's also anxious to get the tanker truck rolling. So, these people are, are doing their homework already to get the, the bids processed information and, and the information need to, to buy their materials, the trucks and, and bodies and so on. And it's a matter of, if we tell them, okay, we have cash on hand, so July first theoretically, you can go out and get the ball rolling. Or do you wanna say, well, we gotta do bonding, which is gonna require an official statement to be made, and financial advisor on board, and bond resolutions and so on?
But do we have to do bond resolutions, to modify bond resolutions because we're switching funding?
We're gonna need bond resolutions, well, my, my thought is to look at how much interest has been generated, so that's not really the true bonding funds per se. There's, there's two, of that money, there's two pieces, there's actual bonding money that we bonded previously, and there's interest that's accrued on that money, which is kinda like the low-hanging fruit, we could take that off without going back to the bond council. But you're a hundred percent correct, to redirect any of the bond money, we will need to get bond resolutions. So, you're, you're to a valid point, we're going back anyway to get these other, you know, five identified items, we can picture it out, you know, one time as well, and get resolutions all in one shot.
Well...
That's definitely, you know, an option.
Yeah, I mean, the, the TDS roof project is not this summer.
Right.
So, there's, we have no numbers on that, so...
Right.
And the high school roof project, that changes a little bit now if the low bid is coming back. So, my, my suggestion, I guess, would be, 'cause we're gonna have to do bond resolutions.
Correct.
Because I don't think you have enough interest to cover all of this.
No, I would say not.
Okay. So, if you can get all of that information together for us, so that we know what we're talking about on there, so that we can do it in...
We, we had given, the, the woman from the state doing the audit, came down about three weeks ago and got some more information from us, and I contacted her as of, was it last Friday or it was Monday? And she hadn't gotten to it yet. So, explained to her we're trying, this is really holding up a lot of, you know, subsequent events we're trying to get to, and, you know, she's working on it, it's not the best I can do, so... But I, I, you're right, I can have Glenn Santoro and Robinson call, prepare the bond resolutions to at least redirect the money from the bond proceeds, you know, get them rolling, and hopefully, again, my sixty-day window hopefully is still a valid window when she'll have the information back as to what our final numbers are, and if we do owe her any money back, which we're gonna owe her money back, it's just inevitable, she'll deny some things that we previously didn't, and we have a chance to rebut it as well, so it's not a, you know, a finite line in the sand kinda thing, we do have a chance to, you know, respond to her letter when we do get a letter from her. So, it's, it's far from over, put it that way. But I guess the question still goes back to, what do you tell these people who you've given this money to? Do they have it as of July first? Do they have it as of...
Yeah, and the school system wants to know as well.
Yeah, theirs is all predicated on summer work as well, and...
And then it serves with the timing issue for the school system as well.
Well, I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem using the MBIS funds if you feel that there's enough there.
Right.
I mean, it's up to the rest of the council too, I'm just one vote.
Right.
But if you're gonna do bond resolutions...
Get them all in one shot.
On all these projects.
Right.
Yes, I would prefer to have them done correctly and get them all done at one shot on there.
I'll try to get them for the next meeting, which is our finance meeting theoretically.
Yeah, when is finance?
The second meeting of the month, is what we agreed on.
Okay, so we'll bring that, bring that back? We'll bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Item thirteen, new business, discussion in action.
I want to amend the agenda under new business for item D. For discussion about the council's role with things like the police commission and the fire commission.
I second that.
Moved by Councilor Rose, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Estefido. Councilor Fawnin.
Yeah, yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Okay. New business, discussion in action. Item A, town attorney review of hold harmless agreement for regional shook house.
Actually, I asked the town manager to put this on the agenda. This is a pretty straightforward agreement, whereas the town police department wants to use some facilities of the city of Milford. The problem I have is that we have been representing, my office has been representing the city of Milford in, in various matters, and so, what I would like to do is to simply refer this, so we have a conflict. And I think this is the first time that we've ever had, I've ever had a conflict because of the city of Milford, but it, it came up, so I would like your permission to refer this to Tim Yolan, former town attorney, and if there's any cost involved in him doing this, I would absorb that. It's not something that I can do, and it's not something that I was gonna do without your permission, but...
Do we need to vote on that, or is it just a consensus?
It's unusual, but I would just assume I'd be voting on it.
I'll make a motion that we refer that item to Tim Yolan.
I'll second it.
That's for John's conversation.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Estefido.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Item B, AT&amp;T Smart Link Letter Regarding Potential Cell Site, Cell Tower Site.
Yes, this is the item I referred to when we talked about the letters and notices coming in about cell towers, and this particular one involves the property at, the town owns or is in possession of at Twelve Bittersweet Drive. So, there's some maps there to show you where that is, and the letter is there, looking for a direction from the council as to how you wanna proceed. Is this something you wanna entertain and to look at as a potential revenue source?
So, this is town property now, Twelve Bittersweet?
Yes.
Would this help the police and fire department with the, with the dead zone over the Guilford?
I mentioned to Mike, when we, when Commerce Drive Tower was built, there was a provision that the manager at the time gave to the siding council, saying that the town wanted free use of that for emergency communications. So, that same provision should be forwarded to the siding council on this, when it gets to that point, that we want free, free tower space for police-fire emergency communications.
Right.
You're right, there is a dead spot on Route Eighty.
There's a dead spot.
Right, towards Guilford line. That, that would solve it.
Right, that would solve it.
Definitely.
Remember how bad it was before the other tower was there?
Yeah.
There was no cell service on the side of the town.
So, you just, do we need to make a motion if we wanna move this forward? That you want...
Right, I mean, certainly there's consideration, I, you know, I defer to the council whether or not it's something you wanna pursue with respect to impact on, on the neighborhood, the residents there, you know...
It's a residential neighborhood, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, I live in that neighborhood.
They're gonna put in a cell tower, it's to the...
My backyard.
It's kind of, it, it, isn't it off on the neighborhood a little bit?
But it is, it is, yeah, it is kind of a, almost towards Guilford kinda...
It's like an open, is it open space? There's nothing there, right?
Not really. I mean, they'll probably have to cut it right away, I'm sure, because...
How did the town acquire that piece?
That I couldn't tell you, I did not do the research. It says nineteen sixty-seven.
It's probably, yeah, open space or something, part of the subdivision approval.
In nineteen sixty-seven?
Yeah.
That's when that went in, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, zoning went in in sixty-two.
Well, zoning went in in sixty-two, but I don't think they had open space required.
Yeah, 'cause see, I'm right here.
Well, designated as a public area.
Isn't that go way back to the Guilford Line?
Yeah, right.
That's the Guilford Line that they're showing it against.
Yeah. I mean, there's one house that's, you know, looks very close to it, but...
They'd have to enter it from Bittersweet, is that right, Kurt?
Well, Bittersweet is the cul-de-sac there, it looks like.
I believe those apartments to the, they're right on the Guilford Line, I think they're laying across apartments, what you call apartments.
I mean, what do they, what do they pay for them? Do they pay about three thousand a month rent for sites like that?
Yeah, we had done some work, geez, probably in the late nineties when they went on Ciro Road, proposed to be on the town dump, we had done some revenue models, and it was pretty lucrative. And I think what happened at that point, they did the balloon fly, and the residents were opposed to it. So instead of being it on the town dump, ended up getting moved about a quarter mile on Ciro Road, and someone else is getting the revenue now instead of us, but this is an opportunity to get some revenue, as you mentioned, but also to solve some public safety, radio communication issues, so...
I mean, I don't know if the residents up there have been contacted, that area I don't think is that, it's that bad to put it on, it's a pretty dense wood area, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
I mean, to pursue that, we'd have to have a public hearing? Or does the tower have to have a public hearing?
Tower.
Tower.
The tower can almost cram it down, once they go to the Connecticut Siding Council, they can basically, they can listen and just say, yeah, it's long and nice, they're gonna be doing it anyway. We're the ones that are gonna make the decision on whether or not we're gonna lease it, and just looking at the map, I don't know the area at all, a little bit concerned about, there's a lot to the southwest, and there's a lot of, two lots immediately to the north of this site. I assume those are residential properties with homes on them.
Yeah, you would...
They are.
Yeah, that would, that would be the site outlined in red, is, there's a house right there on that end lot of the cul-de-sac, would be right in backyard of that house.
Now, is that line direct? Does that house have a building that's on our land, Kurt?
These are, they're more or less, I mean, to be honest with you, the, when they created GIs, they used the session map, put them on, and sometimes you run across that, the house is not exactly, you know, that property line is not exactly there, and I'm sure that property line is tweaked a little bit so that that house is solely within that property, but some of them just don't fit, it's in the cage, but it's not...
Going to your kitchen in Guilford.
I don't think so, that's why I'm...
I don't know, I would probably wanna maybe contact those residents that are right there and see if they're...
How hard is it to set a notice to everybody that has an address on Bittersweet Drive and the far end of Briarwood Drive? It's not that many properties.
Yeah, that, shouldn't be that hard. Is the thought process to notify them that the town council's considering this and you wanna, you wanna...
Yeah, set a date on the agenda, let them come out and speak their mind. Yeah, it's on his backyard.
It looks like it's right there.
Send them a copy of this letter as well.
Yeah.
Don't send them the map, just the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll kill it.
Yeah, 'cause my cousin's house is right here, I mean, I don't...
Doesn't seem...
No, if it doesn't work out, yeah, I'm right down the street.
They can't go in.
One in your front yard.
For three thousand, I want them to put it right in my backyard.
They could come up to my kitchen.
I have an board on it.
All right.
Could we contact them and see what they're willing, what the lease agreement would be?
I can...
It's gonna be around thirty-five hundred, I bet.
About that?
About that, I think. They don't...
Isn't there...
There's very many carriers you have.
Right.
The base amount, two carriers, every somewhat per carrier.
Right, 'cause we'd wanna be smart, we don't wanna lease the one guy and let them get all the other ones, we wanna, we've gotta write it up right.
Isn't there like somewhat more like camouflage or decorative ways of doing it?
They have it look like trees.
In Vermont, in Vermont, Massachusetts, they look like, they look like, you know, giant fake pine trees, but you can pick them out pretty easy. I mean, they do look better than a tower.
They disguise it as if they do them in a real church steeple. It's about it, yeah.
Right. Yeah. All right. See, item C, future development of sewer lines along Route Eighty.
We dumped that on Kurt, right?
Yeah.
Really, there are two areas, one we talked about tonight, sort of the suck it area. The other area is near Fowler Road along Route Eighty, and that's the immediate area, and that's where the swamp is, basically. That one ties into the potential development of a piece on Fowler Road, which would bring sewers up to Fowler Road. That was approved, I'm trying to get it, five or six years ago by the WPCA. There was a couple items left, and they were gonna come back, and the economy just sorta, they have to finalize some details. One of the details was depth of the sewer line through the property, and was there any cost sharing by the WPCA? If there's additional depth.
Where would that line, now, that, that line's not gonna run down Route Eighty, though, that's gonna run...
No, it's through the, the old City Mission property.
To the trolley line or something, or down...
Along, along, you know, into that piece, out to Fowler Road.
And where was it gonna...
Basically, it would get to Fowler, we asked for it to be extended to Fowler Road, the developer needed all the way out to Fowler Road, but seeing their access was Fowler Road, it would get the line out to Fowler Road for potential connection for properties on Fowler Road and along Route Eighty in the future, 'cause it's gotta go through that property to get there.
And that, that doesn't make it gravity, though, does it?
It's gravity up to that point. The problem is, to get to Route Eighty, there's the Munger Brook to there, either you're pretty deep, you know, up to thirty-foot cuts to get it out to there, or you do some pumping. I mean, that's some of the details that had to be worked out. Just to give you a little overview on that, the developer of the project has a P&amp;Z approval, and the P&amp;Z is giving them, they're doing some grading work in anticipation of development, but what I think's gonna happen, they're gonna come to sort of relook, the reconfiguration of that development, and the market's changed since they came in five or six years ago, they may wanna restructure how they do the buildings and everything. They've gotta come back to the WPCA, if they change a number or change anything on it. I have been in discussion with them and brought up the issue that we need to resolve, these final outstanding issues in terms of depth of the water.
Can it be done around that and not wait for them to do that? 'Cause my opinion is that's not gonna happen anytime in the near future.
That's a, that's a major way to get it up there, 'cause the current line is on the other side of Munger Brook into that, that piece over there. That's where it's deepest.
Where is it on Notchill and Route Eighty?
It's on Notchill and Route Eighty, basically where Munger Brook comes through.
The old town hall is not on sewer?
It's on sewer, it comes up to there. It services the funeral home, and town hall goes through it, adjacent to the...
So is it up to Route Eighty on Notchill at that point?
Right, but the depth is gonna be the issue, and, you know, getting from point A to...
So what if we, what if we were looking to just go right up Route Eighty? From Notchill?
Yeah.
And that way, everything's encompassed.
Yeah, but I, I think we looked at it early, just the grade doesn't work going through there.
So we need a pumping station or something?
Well, I mean, yeah, again, and it's, the cost going down Route Eighty is pretty hefty. It was always planned, and it started twenty-five years ago when there was a development plan, the life care facility in that same property we talked about. We looked at the whole scenario back then. And if you want, what I can sort of do, 'cause I know I, I looked at this, you know, a number of years ago, try to sort of dig that up, relook at it, bring it before the WPCA, and we can discuss sort of some alternatives and, you know, try to move it along in terms of getting information together and alternatives.
So basically, so it would come down Route Eighty, would have to go down Eighty, down Fowler Road, around the back of the old City Mission, and tie in on Twenty-two, is that the way it's kinda slated?
Yeah, that's, that was the plan. I mean, and the plan was good when the development's coming through, 'cause they, they have to lay it for their development, and they can get it out significantly down towards, further down Route Eighty where the, where the demand and the need is.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, that piece of property is strategic, then it's strategic to get sewers through to the town, and maybe we gotta look at that.
And again, I can, I gotta dig it up, I mean, but I, I know we looked at and put some preliminary plans together, and then I can sort of bring them back before you, we can discuss it, and I know the developer, from everything I've heard, they'll be back, you know, relooking at the whole thing before plan zoning, and they'll have to come before this board. 'Cause it's an ideal thing, the corner of Fowler Road and Route Eighty, I mean, that's, that's pretty much...
Could come from both ways.
Yeah, I mean, it's a low area, they got water issues and septic issues, and, you know, if you had anybody with any water usage, you know, they, you know, they get potential problems there. There have been repairs made, but it's, it's not a good situation.
Could you show us, you know, put something together and then show us the grades on...
Yeah, 'cause I think we did, I gotta try to dig it up, but yeah, we have those available. Depending on, if I have something already available, it's pretty easy just to pass it on, now I gotta sort of generate it.
The thing is, I think we have to try to pursue whatever grant money we could get and try to get a plan together, but I think maybe over ten years or fifteen years or whatever it takes, I think it's, it's important going forward to the health of our town to get that, I mean, you know, 'cause all of the properties that are falling apart down that corridor could be developed into, you know...
Right, the septic is the, the septic's the huge issue.
The septic is a huge, yeah, in a lot of those areas, absolutely.
On Route Eighty down there.
Right.
It really makes it so, you know, nobody's gonna increase those buildings because they can't.
If I recall correctly, we sort of had it, you get gravity up to about West Pond Road, a little bit before there, but then the brook comes through, there's a brook crossing there, and I think we ran out of, you know, we ran out of grade, you may have to have additional pumping. I got, we were trying to handle that initial area, was the focus at that point. To go further, we have to, you know, look at it a little bit more in detail, but, you know, grade is always an issue. But, I mean, there's, there's pumping, the, pumping is not, you know, the end of the world, it's a maintenance item.
Well, can't they cross the brook with the, just cross the brook with the pipe above grade?
No, I mean, 'cause you lost grade.
You lost, you're losing grade there.
If I recall correctly...
So it goes downhill to the Guilford Line?
Well, I mean, the low point, well, it's pretty flat, I, I gotta look at it, and I'll, I'd be wrong if I tried to tell you exactly what's happening, 'cause I don't have the detailed.
Take a look at it.
But like I said, if I can find something that I think we looked at, at least I'll get that, you know, we can start from there, 'cause I know we didn't look at it five or so years ago.
Ask the government, ask the feds if they'll honor the nineteen seventy-seven agreement?
The seventies was the time.
Would they, they pay eighty percent?
It was ninety percent, it was...
Ninety percent?
That was a good time, now, there's nothing out there.
And all they had to do was say, we want sewers.
And that's, everybody did, I mean, that's when we got, you know, that happened here.
We can't.
So, okay.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Okay, item D, discussion, the role of the council with the PD and Fire Department Commissions.
Okay. So, John?
Yes, Albert.
Alfred.
Oh, Alfred, I'm sorry.
So, so what I would like, John, is, or what I wanna discuss on this is, you know, in the, however many years I've been on the council, I've often wondered, sometimes like, how some of these things get approved, and on the town council, we don't know about it until it's tax time and we have to try and fund them. So what I would like to do in, you know, for the next meeting, is have you tell us, I know that, so, so these are appointed commissions, and I'm not picking on any commissions or commissioners, I'm just trying to look going forward, what's best for the town north of Branford. So in that, is it, would it be wise to, I, I know that with all boards and commissions, we have trouble getting quarums, we always seem to have a quorum at the town council level. So what I would like to do is see, what power does the town council have on, over boards, over commissions that we appoint? Or can we eliminate them? Can we say that, can we change what we do and say that we wanna be involved in hiring or, or, you know, get involved in pensions and, and all those sort of items? And then say, like, currently, what power do we have, if any, and what act of the council, is it an act of the council to change it? And, and I don't know, I guess, since I'm asking the question, can the council say, okay, from next Wednesday forward, the town council is the police commission, or the town council is the fire commission? Or, so I guess, let's ask that question, and then say, okay, the town council wants to be part of the hiring process and the, the pension issues and all that, at the level, you know, talking to the paid personnel? And so see, what we have now for power and what we would have to do or can do, or how we would do it if we wanted to take full power?
I can give you a preliminary response, and sure, very sure, it's very simple. If you have a police commission, or if you have a fire commission, you have no power, okay? Both of those commissions have total power over their equipment, the property, the hiring, firing, appointing of personnel. They're both created by ordinance. So to answer your question, how can you get power or can you eliminate them? You definitely can eliminate, you definitely can eliminate both of them by simply rescinding those ordinances or passing an ordinance, eliminating those two commissions. I know you, I know as a matter of law, you can not have a police commission, I would be surprised if you couldn't have a fire commission, I just don't, I just haven't had occasion to look at that. But a police commission is something that a town may choose to have. Now, but they're not required to have it, but if they do have it, the police commission has basically carte blanche control and power over personnel and properties and equipment and that type of thing. The one thing that I don't want you to think could happen is that if, while the town council, the town council is the finance authority for the town, and it's the legislative body of the town. So you could pass a law that gets rid of the police commission and the fire commission, but that doesn't mean that under our charter, the town council now becomes the police commission or the fire commission. Most likely, it would be the town manager. But again, that's something I would, I would look into, but the duties of the town council are very specifically defined. The town manager, for instance, there's only four offices that are actually created by the town charter. One of them, oddly enough, involves a position that you've been discussing recently, and that's the building official. The building, the official... The building official is a position or a department that is created by the charter, not by an ordinance. Similarly, the Department of Public Works is the only other department that's created by the town charter. So the significance of that, of course, is you'd have to have a whole charter revision and a whole, you know, quite a bit more, you know, there's a whole statute on how we can amend the charter. Now, there are two other positions that are created in the charter, but, and one is the Department of Welfare, which we really, I don't even know if we have anybody per se doing that. And the other is, I'll, I'll, wait a minute, I think I have it here.
Well, John, I wasn't looking for you to answer it off the cuff tonight. I was figuring that you could answer it in two weeks.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to cut through the chaff here and see if I can get to your real point. The other position, by the way, is the purchasing agent. Those are charter created positions, but unlike the building inspector and public works, the charter appoints the town manager to those duties until the council creates a department or a position occupied by somebody else. So I, the only, the one thing that I, that I would look at is to confirm my intuition that the fire department or the fire commission is treated similarly by the state statutes to the police commission. And secondly, if the town council were to take the position that they were to eliminate both of these commissions, would that mean that the town council could in effect put themselves in that authority position? But I can...
So that would be the question that you would need to answer.
Yeah, I mean, you can't tinker with these commissions if you have these commissions. By our, by our ordinance and by state statute, the police commission and I expect the fire commission, if you create them, you have...
They have full power.
They have full power. Now, as far as the finance goes, we have liaisons, they, we are the funding authority. It would be foolish for them to obligate the town without making sure that the council is on board with, with a particular purchase since it's got to be funded. So in a way, the town council does have some indirect, you know, tentacles in those commissions. They come here routinely to get the town's blessing because ultimately, you have the right not to fund something as a financial authority. I don't know if that helps in some of the areas that you wanted to address. I don't know, you know, the other thing is you can look and see, I don't know that there, you know, the town likes to look at what other towns are doing. I mean, I'm not sure that there are very many towns other than, you know, certain regions that have a state trooper, you know, where a town of our size doesn't have a particular commission devoted solely to police protection or fire protection, but legally, you have the power to eliminate those. You also have the obligation to provide, provide health, safety and welfare for the community and you'd have to find alternate means of doing that. But right now, I can't tell you that it could be the council. I will look at that.
Okay, so that's, that's basically then, you've answered everything but that?
Yeah.
So?
Yeah.
And so what I would like then is to carry that on to the next agenda for discussion and, let me get John's answer on that.
Okay.
So if, just to be clear, we can't tweak a department, we can't tweak a commission?
Once again, the police commission by state law, not by our, you know, if it was just a matter of our ordinance, then I would say, sure, you can tweak it. But the state statute, which gives the power of the council to create a police commission, also tells you what the powers are of that police commission. I'm assuming I'm going to find the same thing for the fire commission. I just haven't had occasion to think about that.
And I don't know that, that there's anything that needs to be done. I just figured that we, we, I like to look at things and have different options, that's all.
Well, like the gentleman from the East Shore Health District said, we can always do things better. We should always improve, I think, were his words here. We've had some, we've had some issues that have been, we've had some notorious issues with at least one of those commissions and so I don't...
Right, and I just want to make it clear to all commission members that, you know, I'm just looking for information. I have nothing against either any, all commissioners or the commissions. So, you know, I want to get this information and then depending on how it's answered, we can have a further discussion. I'm done.
Item 14, citizen statements and petitions. All right, a motion to executive.
I'll make a motion, move into executive session.
Including the town attorney and town manager. Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitman. Roll call.
Mayor Kent Delara?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Estefino?
Yes.
Counselor Flannin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.